Good evening and welcome to the October 26th meeting of the Revere City Council. Everyone, please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito is absent, Councillor Novoselski is absent, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the general of the meeting held on October 19th.
Motion approved. You have a motion approved? So approve, so audit.
Calendar item number one, hearing called is ordered on the application of Oxford Airport Technical Services, 47 Meacham Ave, Elmont, New York, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to convert one non-conforming use, a contractor's storage yard, to another non-conforming use, maintenance and repair facility at 885 North Shore Road.
I'd like to hear proponents.
Mr. President, good evening. I think it was Yogi Berra that said deja vu all over again. So here we are, and as usual, it's a pleasure to appear before the city council, and tonight we have Oxford back for round two. As you will recall, that they have installed a repair facility at the location, and that's for purposes of doing most of the small mechanical work for JetBlue. During the summertime, they were put into a little bit of a squeeze where the work that they were doing at the airport became overwhelming, and they had to do some of the work off-site. And since we had an agreement here with the council that we would only do storage, which is allowed as a matter of right and was the previous use, they could not do it here. So some decision along the line, above my pay grade, was made that they would not pursue the Revere location. They rethought that, and they're back. Nothing has changed. I think that in the, excuse me, in the number of months that they have occupied the facility, they've been respectful, they've been quiet, they've received some accolades from the neighbors who have become to know them quite well. There was some concern about noise, about things coming and going at crazy hours of the morning before 6:00 and after midnight. That doesn't happen, hasn't happened, and will not happen in the future. So they're anxious to, once again, seek the approval of the Revere City Council for a special permit to operate their storage and now repair facility here in Revere. And if there are any questions regarding the day-to-day operation or what they're tasked with by their primary contractor, JetBlue, Mr. Jones is here once again to answer any questions. Any questions regarding zoning, I can answer.
Attorney Sipulera, I think that before we, there were some conditions we had put. Do you recall?
I think you did. I think some of the conditions were ascribed by the Site Plan Review Committee, and I think the council had indicated it would, at least in subcommittee, attach those conditions. I think there was one, however, that was modified either at the subcommittee, and I forget which one it was because it was, it may have been vague when it came out of the Site Plan Review Committee, but we-
Some sort of shrubbery or something in front.
Yeah, something in front.
And the hours of operation, I think, would cease at 9:00 at night. There'd be no noise emanating from that facility at that time.
Right, right. I think they did do something out in the front, the front element.
We were gonna put the vinyl slats in the fence so you couldn't see.
That's fine.
Right.
Yeah, that hasn't been done yet.
No, we will.
Okay, very good. Are there any other proponents, those wishing to speak in favor of this? Any opponents? Anyone opposed to this? Hearing not closed, both sides of the hearing. Councillors. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe this will enhance the area. As we all know, it was a dump before with wood planks torn throughout the whole place, and I believe this company here will take care of it and beautify the area. That's it. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support. I think it's a good use for that parcel, and I fully intend to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Hearing not closed, that side of the hearing, and this will be going to the zoning subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the petition of Verizon and Mass Electric Company for a joint pole location on Milano Ave at the intersection of Filomena Ave.
Sir, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, my name's Everett Bryan. I'm a rights subway engineer with Engineering and Data Solutions, representing Verizon, New England, at 125 High Street in Boston.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our petition this evening is to place one jointly owned pole, number 1215 over 1, in the sidewalk area approximately 90 feet westerly from the intersection with Filomena Avenue. And this is necessitated by work that the city needs to do on a pumping station at the rear of number 44 Milano, and this pole needs moved to accommodate that.
Are there any other proponents wishing to speak in favor of this? Mr. Reistrum?
Thank you, Mr. President. McReistrum, city engineer, 53 Genesee Street. I'd just like to speak on behalf of support for passing this petition by Verizon. This pole needs to be moved in order for the city to continue to do the work that is being done to the Milano Ave pump station, which is for upgrade and rehab of that station. We are unable to move forward with some of the electrical and control issues without the pole being able to be moved. So I'd like to ask that the council vote and vote favorably for this petition.
Is there any urgency on this because of flooding or anything?
The existing station is operating, but it is sort of in a state of flux only because it's, we're in the middle of construction, and we'd like to get a lot of this buttoned up prior to the, you know, the winter weather showing up.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. President? Any other proponents? Hearing not closed, that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing not closed, that side of the hearing. Councillor Haas.
I think because of the urgency of it, with the area being low-lined, I think we really should expedite this and do it this evening. Thank you.
You, Councillor Haas. This is, Councillor Patch is wired, so I'm gonna have him speak next. Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councillor Haas. The sooner they get this done, the better off the residents of the street will be. It's a kind of a mess in that area from all the digging and what have you. But I would also agree that if we could vote on that, on that tonight and pass that. And I also, Nick, if you could pass on to the contractors on Hallo-, if they take extra care on Halloween, make sure there's a lot of safety tape around and they do their best for the kids. That area, as you know, in Halloween, and maybe you don't know, but on Halloween, that's the most hot-hit area in the city. So if you could do that for me? Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patch. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I agree with my two colleagues, this should be expedited tonight. And I also agree with Councillor Patch, but I think you need more than safety tape down there. They need barrels, they need real safety signage to keep kids from getting hurt. And he's right, that they get inundated with kids on Halloween down there. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zambudo. Any other councillors? Hearing not, I'd like to close that side of the hearing, suspend rules, and bring this up for a vote.
Roll call. Shall the city council approve the petition of Verizon for one jointly owned pole, number 1215-1, on Milano Avenue? Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito is absent, Councillor Novoselski is absent. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following motions or communications are being reported out of committee with the recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number three, motion relative to the establishment of a human resources department.
Place it on file.
Mr. President, I want to leave that in committee, please.
I'll leave it in committee? Fine.
Calendar item number four, an ordinance establishing a personnel department in the city of Revere.
Same thing.
Same thing, tie them together?
Calendar item number five, an ordinance relative to the clearance around fire hydrants.
Stay in committee.
Calendar item number six, regarding the snow removal and winter parking plan.
That'll be placed on file, yeah.
Calendar item number seven, motion relative to the globe direct flyers.
Place it on file.
Calendar item number eight, communication from Site Plan Review relative to findings and conditions for a special permit C-15-10 relative to 1A Lamson Street.
Looking for the communication. Charlie, is that your word?
Yeah.
What do you want to do?
I refer, that should be referred to the zoning subcommittee.
Okay. Is that what you want?
Yes.
Refer to the zoning subcommittee.
That's the procedure, right?
Yeah.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the planning board relative to the board's recommendation for the proposed multi-unit residential construction moratorium.
That's in committee right now. Remaining committee. Committees. Yeah, Councillor Haas and Councillor Riordan.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councillor Gino that the mayor requests the police department to look into the enforcement of Chapter 5.57 of the Revere Revised Ordinance as commercial burglar alarms. 11 years ago, the city approved this ordinance to monitor commercial burglar alarms, but there has been no clear enforcement of the fines set forth in the ordinance. This is a public safety issue because many officers respond to commercial burglar alarms on a daily basis to the same properties. It's a safety issue for both the officer responding and the public.
Councillor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I found this motion was really important because I went through some public records of reports, and I have in front of me 18 pages of logs from the police department. There was one report placed on file after 18 pages of false alarm calls. And this is an issue for many reasons, one of which is, you know, the police officer's gonna be responding to these calls, and they're gonna be so used to responding to false alarms that, God forbid, there's really a case one day where they go into a building and there's an issue, they're not gonna be prepared for it because they're gonna be so used to these routine calls in these same properties. And reading the reports, there are many of the same properties. There are the same residential developments, there are the same commercial developments, and they need to be held accountable for this drain on our city services. This motion, the original ordinance was put on the books 11 years ago to help the city, you know, get some of the money back that they're using on the resources, like the police and fire department, or police department, rather, for these false alarm burglar calls. And they need to be reimbursed for it because if it's a recurring issue, the alarm companies need to be held accountable, and the owner needs to be held accountable to make sure the alarm companies are doing their job, because a lot of these properties have private alarm companies that should be handling issues like this, because many of them are, you know, mechanical error, and education needs to happen between these owners and the companies so that they know how to respond correctly and how to use their systems properly. Because our police department doesn't need another burden like this because it's just a drain on our system. So I hope that this can finally be enforced since it's been sitting on the books for 11 years, and I hope that it can alleviate some of the burden that the police department takes by answering these false alarms so when there really is an emergency, we have enough personnel there and they're prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gino. Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great motion. But I would also, if she, if Councillor Gino would, if I could amend it to also for fire alarms also, because I did have conversation with the fire chief, and they're actually working, they have, in the discussion, they have, they have had, along with the mayor and the Safe Housing Task Force, in their meetings, this issue has come up, and they also, along with the police chief being there, they also had a conversation with the fire chief about, he's very upset with the fire alarms going to the same places, and God forbid they ever get in an accident going to a phony fire alarm. The, in the discussion, your issue does come up, it did come up, and they're having the same problem that the building department had. If you remember, we had to set up a whole new ordinance, way of payment hearings. This is gonna have to happen in order for this ordinance to have any effect, because it's not, it's not covered under any laws, state laws. So what we have to wait for, I guess, is they're gonna have to come up, because they have no way of handling payments, same way the building department didn't. We lost, the city lost a ton of money because Chelsea Court wouldn't hear their hearings. So I just want the council to know that the mayor and the Safe Housing Task Force, which David Krasaroff and Nick Canazzo and Benny, Benny the building department, and I think Peter Brown, who's a lawyer from the, the Ambrosios firm, and Paul Capizzi, they're all on it, along with the mayor, and they are gonna, they are gonna take care of this. They are gonna, they are gonna try to get up some kind of system in order, like they did with the building department, to pay for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Patch. Councillor Haas? I'm sorry, Councillor Gino, you wanted to comment on his request?
Yes, just on the amendment. I think it's a great amendment, and I'm glad he spoke with the fire chief about it. I was only hesitant to make that amendment in case, I know sometimes the fire calls can be a little different, where these are more or less going to empty buildings and responding to burglar alarms, or a false alarm fire call. Wasn't sure it could be a little more serious, but if the fire chief is on board with it, I'd be happy to add your amendment, and I thank you for that. And I think you brought up a great point. The important part of this is there's no way to enforce it. It's very similar to that building issue, so I welcome that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gino. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. We addressed this not too long ago. We're gonna, you know, people are using fire alarms, burglar alarms, as a means of being noticed. People, there was a person on Park Ave who used to use it once a week. She wanted to see the police officers or the firemen come up. I thought we assigned a cost. We gave the individual so many calls, and then we would actually charge them. Now, we have the means to charge them because Jessica indicated that she's got all this information. So I think what should be done for people who keep on calling and wasting our time, but again, you never know when it is a waste, it could be a serious issue. I think we should really put something in there as far as a fine or something to that extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haas. Councillor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was very clear, part and parcel to the writing of this ordinance. And in those days when we were discussing an ordinance to come on board, there were particular locations that repeatedly the alarms would go off, and police would be dispatched to a location, and certainly tying up resources that were very valuable to our community and at a great expense. It's a risk every single time a police officer goes to a call such as this, and they don't know what's on the other side of what they're going to, going to. So there's a great concern for the safety of the personnel within the police department, and now whereas the fire department's getting involved with it also, there is a certain amount of, and certain degree of uncertainty when they enter. But they're more readily available to that type of, they're trained more to going into abandoned buildings, more so than police, for the search of need. But I remember very clearly that there was one particular location down by the Socorro Club, that that alarm would go off faithfully free four times a week, and it was maddening because, or whatever type of alarm they had, I could hear it from my house. And bellowing throughout all the area, the neighborhood was going nuts over it. So, and just couple that over other places and locations within the community that are being disturbed by these, for some reason, they're tripped. They go off and, for whatever the reason may be, a faulty system of some sort, but it has to be rectified, and I think that the ordinance putting a monetary value with the placement of a call is a very valid thing, and I think it's a good thing. And certainly, there should be safeguards as to how we, and I think we did allow forgiveness for like three calls, and after that, then there'd be a fine levied upon them. And I think the three calls will span over approximately a year. So giving everyone an opportunity for what might occur, be prepared, and certainly, I think that this is a good motion to get a value placed upon it to show the seriousness of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Guanasso. Councillor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I believe that Councillor Patch's amendment is excellent on this, particularly since it accentuates the fact that we now have a way to enforce our ordinances, which we didn't have before under U40. But I think perhaps the ordinance could stand an amendment sometime in the future. I'll be prepared to propose it, that in addition to the fine, we require anybody who installs a commercial burglar alarm to give some factual information about who maintains the burglar alarm. My experience is that burglar alarms generally don't go off except when they're faulty or when someone's actually breaking in. So if we had information on, at the Department of Public Safety, at the fire station, or wherever, the, perhaps at the, at the call center that we've just established, so that when an officer, someone goes out, they have the information as to the maintenance person who's in charge of that. I think it would be, at least you could call them up on it and say, "Look, you need to fix this so it doesn't happen again." I think a lot of times what happens is the owner of the property says, comes down, and everybody says, "Oh, that's too bad, it went out," or "The door was left open," or something like that, and no one ever actually addresses the issue on a permanent basis, and then it opens up again the next week. So I think that's something that we ought to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Riordan. You know, I think that's an excellent idea. I mean, after all, if we, expending our services to respond to, as we should, to fire and police alarms, perhaps if there's a problem with them, we should be well aware of that so that we can make sure it's addressed so that we're not overusing our services. On the motion, all in favor, so audit.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councillor Novoselski that the mayor requests the DPW to cut down the tree and remove the stump at 574 Beach Street on the Walnut Ave side.
On the motion?
Late motion presented by Councillors McKenna, Morabito, and Novoselski, that the mayor requests the MBTA Transit Police to have more of a presence and monitor the Beauchamp, Revere Beach, and Wonderland stations for illegal drug activity. Further, that additional surveillance cameras be installed outside of the train stations, and that the camera feeds are monitored regularly.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I did my homework, and I went to the three stations, and the three stations do have cameras inside the stations, but there's nothing outside the stations. At Revere Beach Station, the walkway from Shirley Ave into the station has no monitoring. So a lot of the illegal activities coming off of the MBTA trains, they're coming into Revere, their transactions are going down, and then they're getting back on the train, and they're going into wherever they're going. What I would like to see, and what we would like to see, is more police presence, the transit police presence at the stations. We haven't seen any of this, and we would really like to see this happen, so that's what the motion's for.
Thank you, Councillor McKenna. I think that's an excellent motion, really. It gives the city an extra set of eyes out there, you know, protecting our city. Councillor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion, Councillor McKenna, and I think it's really important because these are gateways to our city. So if we make it known that we're not gonna accept behavior like this in the gateways to our city, they're not gonna be coming into the city, or maybe they'll be more hesitant to. And I think that by making that standard, by showing that we're not messing around, it'll make a point, and I think it's a point that we need to have made a long time ago. So thank you for doing it, Councillor McKenna and your colleagues. I think it'll be really good for the community, because I think we all know, especially that Dunkin' Donuts in front of Beauchamp, they see activity all the time, and it needs to stop because it's not fair to the residents that live in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gino. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Councillor McKenna. It's hard to say fast, commend McKenna, for this, for this motion. Obviously, public safety has always been at the top of my list, and I would have thought that there was, that that walkway would have a camera on it. So I've learned something tonight here that we've gotta look more closely at these things. So great job, and I support you 1,000 percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McKenna. Any other councillors want to speak on this? Councillor Riordan?
No, thank you.
Councillor McKenna?
It wasn't only me, it was Councillor Morabito and Councillor Novoselski. So I can't take credit for it. All three of us were involved with this. Thank you.
They get the kudos, too.
Thank you very much. On the motion, all in favor, so audit.
Late motion presented by Councillor McKenna, that the mayor requests the traffic commission to remove two parking meters in front of four kids only after school at 94 Broadway, and create a bus stop for children to be dropped off at this building between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. This will alleviate buses from double parking and tying up traffic on Broadway.
Councillor McKenna?
So I have been getting calls from the residents that are concerned about when this building is gonna open, and they're afraid that there's, in front of their house is gonna be a drop-off zone. So I viewed the building, and there are two meters down there, and there wasn't any, the meters aren't being used. There is an optical business across the street, and they have their own parking lot. And then there is a, I think it's a mechanical place, and they have their own parking lot. So there is a MBTA bus stop right before this building. In February, this building's gonna open, and 200 kids will be bused from schools from all over the city. If we don't put a parking space there for school buses, then we're gonna tie up traffic on Broadway, and people are gonna be double parked, the buses are gonna be double parked. So I was just wondering if this could be doable.
Thank you, Councillor McKenna. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think by reserving two parking spaces, you're hindering all of the commercial activity. You have arenas there, which they park in the side streets, the neighborhood people, you've got the speakeasy, you have the, you've got all those buildings there, and there's a lack of parking at the present time. So I don't know if it's a good idea really to eliminate two metered parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haas. Councillor Riordan?
You know, I understand Councillor McKenna's concerns about this, but Councillor McKenna was not on the city council at the time that the special permit to allow this building to be built was. And the promises that were made at that time was that there would be no pickup and drop-off in front of that building, but rather in their own parking lot. This sounds to me- This sounds to me like we're giving them an excuse to violate what they agreed to do on their special permit, and I would be completely against this, not to mention that what Counselor Haas has mentioned, that although the speakeasy doesn't exist right now, it's going to probably at some point be something commercial. And beyond that, I've been getting my glasses from Carter's for a long time, and I never parked in any parking lot that they have there, so that's a shock to me if there's a parking lot back there. Yeah, well, I haven't seen it, and I haven't been in it, and I don't think anybody but their own people park there. So I really can't be in favor of this at all. I mean, I can understand that we don't want to put, I hate to anticipate that people are going to go against what they said that they would do, yet if they do go against what they say they would do, the neighbors are the ones that are going to be hurting for it while we take it up and argue with them all about it. So I think it's going to be a disaster down there traffic-wise anyway. We'll see what happens in February, but I think that perhaps we could table this. I don't want to hurt the residents. I don't want to see that they don't, that they have to work their way around a bus, but I think we ought to table it until we see what happens. We can always take away parking meters.
You want to send it to public safety?
Sure.
Yeah, send it to Counselor Patch's public safety committee.
Late motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the mayor take the necessary steps to name the urban trail after Rosemary G. Cataldo. She was a very beloved resident from Ward 6 who regularly walked the urban trail and kept it clean until her passing.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I probably could have wrote 20 paragraphs about Rosemary Cataldo, and I think most people in this room knew her and knew what a wonderful person she was, and, but aside from cleaning the area, she was probably one of the greatest humanitarians that we had. She was involved in every cause for every needy person, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I don't want to go on and on about this, but I think it's completely appropriate to name the urban trail after Rosemary Cataldo. Thank you.
Any other counselors want to speak on this? Counselor Haas?
Both my wife and I know Rosemary very well. She's without question a peach, and anything we can do as far as in her neighborhood to recognize her, it's a great motion. Thank you.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor, so ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the mayor direct the city engineer to prepare a plan of discontinuance for a certain portion of Moretti Street located between 120 and 130 A and B Savage Street.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. That was my mistake. I was, when I sent in the motion, it was supposed to include Counselor Patch, of course, who's the ward counselor and who collaborated with me on this, and it's simply, it's simply to try to help the neighbors get a piece of land that they maintain now, and that's simply what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. On the motion? There is no further business, but I'd like to mention that Counselor Stephen Morabito did call me early this evening and indicate that he had injured his leg and wouldn't be here tonight. I wish him speedy recovery, I know as we all do, and I hope to see him back here on November 9th, which will be our next meeting. I also want to mention that tomorrow, there'll be a fourth generation, Rigo? Fifth, fifth, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Fifth generation. I thought I was the only one that had fifth generations around. But we wish Daveen and Brian the best of luck on their birth of a son tomorrow, and hopefully everything will be fine, and they'll be happy at home very soon together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's it. No further business. Oh, Counselor Gino?
I just have one point of information. A resident approached me today, and I found it really funny that, you know, on the council, we talk about all the different months that we make the city aware of. We talk about, you know, recovery month and all these other months, and this gentleman came up to me and said, you know, "Do you know October's Italian Heritage Month? The council hasn't acknowledged that." And I wanted to acknowledge that tonight because we acknowledge every other month that the state makes appropriate, so I want to wish everybody out there a very happy Italian Heritage Month, even though we are at the end of it. We kicked it off right there with the Columbus State Parade, and I know that at Riviere High School, the National Italian Honor Society's been working hard to educate the school about it, so wishing everyone a happy Italian Heritage Month, and I'm glad it was brought to my attention, so thank you.
Very well put, Counselor Gino. Counselor Riordan?
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President, and I know you would endorse this completely. We have an election coming up. This is our last meeting before the election, so I'd like to urge anybody who's listening, gets to watch it before, a week from Tuesday, to get out and vote. It's very, very, very important.
Yeah, I was going to get to that eventually, but, yeah, but, yeah, written right down there, November 3rd. No, but it is very important, you know. Sometimes people complain about certain things that go on in the city, and the only way you can address those issues and make a positive change is by going out and vote. I believe the polls are open from 7:00 till 8:00 p.m. all throughout the city, and it's just, it's a good thing. I think you feel better once you go out and vote, you feel like you've done your civic duty, and you've made a contribution to the city. With that, this council will stand adjourned until November 9th.